Things that Stephanie had brought up in the, um, in the teaching. And one of them was about the seal that we will have, that was mentioned in Revelation seven two, I think. But anyway, I had an experience as a young Christian. I was probably in my mid twenties and I was in beauty school. And, um, most of the kids in the class, the young ladies in the class, were probably teenagers and I was in my mid twenties. So I was sort of looked at as being an old lady, if you will. But anyway, when the teacher that I had in this class was, she had a friend that was a psychic. And the psychic lady would come up and visit her at least once a week. And every time she'd come up there, all these young girls would crowd around her and they wanted a reading. And she said, "No, I don't do readings." Well, after, I don't know, four or five times of that, the psychic came one day at lunchtime and she said, "I have some extra time today so I can do a reading if anybody's interested." Everybody got excited, except me. And I just, I thought, "I know you're not supposed to seek spirits" and all kinds of stuff, so I got really nervous. I thought, "I don't want any part of this." And so everybody was all excited and they kept saying, "Don't you want a reading?" "No, I don't want a reading." "Oh, you're just an old fuddy duddy." Anyway, um, we went back in the classroom and there's probably twelve, fifteen of us. And the psychic came in and closed the doors, turned the lights down, and she's going to each young lady and doing a reading. Well, I had gone clear to the far side of the room, as far away from all this as I could, because I thought, "I don't want any part of it." But anyway, she's giving each one of these ladies a little something, talking about their spirit guide. Some of their spirit guides were traveling at night and that's why they were exhausted, or so-and-so's spirit guide was gonna give them, um, a clear answer as to something in their life. And I just, I was so nervous. Anyway, she went around the room, everybody got their reading, and she came to me and she looked at me for the longest time. She just, I, I don't know, the whole time I'm thinking, "Oh, my gosh, I don't know what to think here." And I started to say, "I don't want a reading." And she said, "I'm not, I'm not interested in you." And she left. And so my teacher said to me, "What did you do to her?" And I said, "Nothing, I wasn't interested in the reading." So anyway, the next day when I went to class, the teacher said to me, "My friend said yesterday that you upset her, because when she came to you, you had a shroud over you and she could not read you." And she, I said, "Really?" I said, um, "She could actually see that?" And she said, "Yes." And she said, "You were all sealed up." And so that made me think of the seal. I don't know what kind of seal we'll have in Revelation times, but that is a seal that I feel we have as Christians. We're covered by the blood of Jesus and we are sealed.
That is a seal. When you accept Jesus, you're sealed. I imagine it as Saran Wrap. That's how I imagine it. The seal that you're referring to is in the 144,000 Jewish believers, they will be sealed. That's what the, in Revelation, that's what that's talking about. We're already sealed. So I'm thinking if the enemy comes after us, oh, well. We're sealed, yeah.
Thank you, dear. Thank you, Amy. That was powerful. I, I said, "Oh, you've got to tell that story, because isn't it interesting that the Lord uses the word "seal" all the way through Scripture? Um, Song of Solomon, "Set your seal upon my heart." It's all the way through. And as you're reading through your Bible, pay attention to the seals, because that's, that, they're gonna get a mark. They're gonna have to take a mark. We don't know what that mark is gonna look like, those who worship the beast. But we are sealed, isn't that? That's like, you also think of how a king seals his people, or he seals a, a letter or a, a decree, a seal, and he seals it with his signet ring and says, "This is my authority." He has sealed us with his authority. Isn't that powerful? The authority of the believer, we have that because we are sealed in him. So that, that, that terminology is used all through Scripture. We are not, um, not in it because we're not Jewish. We are in that as well, I believe. We are sealed just right now, just like she just had that happen. We are sealed now because we are believers. We are sealed by the blood of Jesus. And that is, that's just a powerful comfort. Um, I, I wanna say, um, something about what she was talking about. Sandra Kennedy, I totally, I love and respect this woman. What a woman of God. Something that she, she said, that we are not to be afraid. And, and she was talking just a bit about, you know, the things that have happened, that can happen. And, and I think Sally brought up, you know, the virus that's going around right now. Something I have learned, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you're gonna think, um, Stephanie is just maybe a little bit off of her rocker. But go to, go to page three. Go to page three, and I want you to look at that Scripture down at the bottom in your notes. I want us to refer to this as often as possible. And I think that it needs to be memorized. If you will memorize this, you will, you will greatly benefit. I wrote it in the, this is from the Passion Translation, but it says, "Jesus said, 'Everything I've taught you is so that the peace which is in me will be in you.'" That's a powerful statement. The peace that is in Jesus himself. He gave, he left it for us. It's for, he wants it to be in us. This will give you great confidence as you rest in me. For in this unbelieving world, you will experience trouble and sorrows or tribulation. But you must be courageous, for I have conquered the world. So that is where we are to be all the time. Now, I have, it has taken me time to learn to be in a place of rest. It is, it has taken me time to not be a white-knuckle driver. It has taken me time to not be terrified for my children, right? The Lord does these things in time. I'm trying to think right now of the one story. Um, but I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell this story, because I have so many fear stories, I could list them for you. I was a fearful child from the time I was very young. I think the, the enemy wanted to use fear against me and he boxed me in with fear and I was terrified. I remember laying awake until all hours of the night, even being terrified in my bed, over nothing, over something, you know, I think something's under my bed or I think something's in my closet, things like that. And some of you may have some of those memories. The enemy loves to terrify a child and that's why, one of my, uh, most angering moments, and I love to set children free from that fear. But, um, for a long time, I was just absolutely a terrified person. So when we moved to Colorado, and we moved from a small farm town in north-central Kansas, Clay Center, Kansas, I was, um, we had two stoplights, I think, in town. So I learned to drive in a very small town. We moved to Colorado, which was totally against me. I didn't wanna move to Colorado and I sure didn't wanna move to a big city. We moved to Denver and I knew I was going to die. I just, I was like, "This is it? I've come to Colorado, I'm gonna die. I'm gonna die on the road. I'm gonna be driving along one day, I'm gonna get hit or I'm gonna make some stupid mistake. I'm gonna die." So I had this, um, just firm belief that, um, I was going to end up in some sort of an accident and did. And, um, so I had let my driver's license expire. We had moved from Kansas to here. And because I had babies, I didn't have a car myself. We didn't have money, there were so many things happening. And I had let my driver's license lapse. And so I had to go into the Colorado License Bureau. And not only did I have to take the test, I had written test, I had to take the driving test as well. And I was, I was, I was okay, but I was terrified, once again, okay? Because I didn't even like to practice driving. I was so afraid of getting on the highway. Because I'd never been around highway. I'd never been around traffic like we have here. Now it's ten times, a hundred times worse than it was then. I laugh at myself. But, um, so here I was, a white-knuckle driver, terrified. I get through the written test and then I have to take the driver's test. I show up, or I, I'm ready to take the driver's test. I get in my car, drive around. My, uh, the, the guy gets in my car, the driver instructor, instructor, instructor gets in my car and he's, and he says, "Well, hello, Stephanie, you know, let's, uh, let's get going." So we start going. And the driving guy instructor turns to me, I don't think he looked at the road once, turns to me and he says, "Stephanie, God has you here in Colorado for a reason. You're not going to die. He has you here for a purpose." And he began to prophesy to me for the next fifteen minutes and he only made me take right-hand turns. So I, like, went around in circles, which I could do, around. And I'm listening, I'm like, "Oh, my goodness, oh, my goodness." Now, this was before, you know, I was, um, now I grew up in a prophetic, uh, uh, family. Uh, we heard from the Lord, we, we loved the Lord. And, but I wasn't in a prophetic community. I didn't know a lot of people who else believed that, you know, I was shocked. And so, um, we get done, he gets out of the car. Um, I, I get my driver's license. And I'm in such shock, I don't, I don't think I said another thing. You know, I just said, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." And I, I began to process that. And I thought, "If the Lord brought me here, he's not gonna kill me." All of a sudden, things started snapping into place in my brain. You know, "If he's got me here for a purpose, he's not gonna let me be taken out by the enemy. So what's your deal, Steph? Get over it." And so I began to conquer fear in my life and, and the, and the enemy was defeated through just a series of reading the Word of God and me changing my mindset about fear. Let me say that if there's something today that is causing you fear, that it's triggering your feet, triggering fear in you, I mean, it could be the coronavirus. I've been listening to things and I'm just like, "You've got to be kidding me." You know, and I turn it, I just turn it off, because I'm like, "They don't know anything. There's no written thing in stone on any of this. It's all conjecture. They're, they're making up the news as they go. And they're, and, but they are bringing a blanket of fear across, around our nation. I really believe that. I'm not gonna participate." And I learned a long time ago that I could turn off the news. Boy, I don't know how I'm getting that. Do you hear it? I, I learned a long time ago, if I turn off the news, if it's upsetting, or if it takes me out of a place of rest, because I'm actually, if I'm participating with anxiety, I am doing the opposite that the Lord just told me to do. If I'm participating with a spirit of fear, I'm not participating with a spirit of love and of power and of sound mind. I've actually disagreed with the enemy and let him have a place in my life. And that place in my life will cause me to fail, to pull back, to say, "I don't want what the Lord's gonna do. I'm gonna hide, I'm gonna keep to myself. If I don't drive, nothing can kill me." That's not even true, right? We begin to believe other lies, because fear is a trap, all right? Did God ever say, "Yeah, go ahead and fear, because I'm not gonna take care of you"? Did he ever say that? He said the exact opposite. And he commanded us to walk in power and love and a sound mind, okay? So, now on the flip side of that, I'm gonna tell you a story was when we traveled to India. We go to India and, um, this is how you cross the street in India. I'm gonna laugh, sorry. It's like a river of traffic coming at you both ways. There are no stop signs there. It didn't matter if there were stop signs or stoplights. There are stoplights, but they're just suggestions. Nobody stops, nobody looks, nobody hesitates. There's no crosswalks. You just, this is what you do. You put your hand out and you walk across the street. And you don't look at the traffic. You don't look at what's coming at you. Now, there's one exception to that. You do pay attention if there is a bus, because the bus looks, buses look like devil buses, I'm not kidding you. They look like our containers, you know, those big containers? That's, that's what they look like coming at you down the street. And, and I had heard, they will run you over, they don't care. But the cars want and expect you to walk through that river of traffic and you'll be fine. But you put your hand out and you don't look, you just walk. So here we are, and that's what we did. We never once got in trouble. We never once got hurt in massive amounts of traffic, back and forth, back and forth. We just put our hand out, shut our, turn the other way. Same thing on the rickshaw. You get in a rickshaw, you start driving, you just shut your eyes, because it doesn't matter. You're gonna get there, it's crazy driving. You know, you, you just can't even believe it. It's, it's, we got to the end of the trip and we were just like, we would laugh hysterically when we got into the rickshaw, because we didn't know what we were gonna go through. And we were just, we would just laugh through it, because we knew we would get there, and why worry? And so there's that whole other thing, is I'm just gonna trust the Lord is gonna get me there, I'm gonna be okay. I could spend a lot of time still in worry and in fret. We could all begin to worry about the things that are going on about in our, in our world right now, couldn't we? We could all begin to really shake and quake about the coronavirus, right? But I'm not gonna spend one minute on it. I'm not gonna spend one second of worry. When my children were out driving and I'd wake up in the middle of the night and go, "Where are they?", I only did that one time. I got up, I went to my Bible, opened my Bible and I said, "Lord, I dedicated that child to you when she was a baby. It's up to you to save her, I can't. I will not be in fear. I refuse to be in fear about where my child is right now." Of course, I called. But then I went back to bed and I slept like a baby and I haven't missed a moment's worth of sleep since. Because I can't save anybody. I can't save myself. I have to walk in confidence that the Lord will take care of me. And I wanna encourage you to not listen to the triggering news. If you need to turn it off, turn it off. And go to that verse and say, "Lord, I'm gonna walk in rest. I'm gonna walk in peace. I'm gonna walk in your rest, like you commanded me to. I will not fear. I will not fear, because you commanded me to." Right? Okay? Is that encouraging to anybody? I think now more than ever, we have got to be the ones who say, "No." I, when an advertisement comes on the TV now and it says, "Oh, you have this, you might have this disease if you do this, this, and this", I'm like, "No, I don't. Shut it off, I'm shutting it off." I'm like, "No, I'm not gonna take that drug, because it's gonna kill me and give me a heart attack? No, and I'm not gonna have that disease." Do you see what I'm saying? We can be flooded with the airwaves saying, "You're gonna get this, you're gonna get that, you're gonna die, you're gonna die." If I die, where am I? Present with who? The Lord. I am not gonna be afraid of that. Oh, death, where is your sting? Where's your victory, death? You don't have any. I'm gonna be with the Lord. My body dies, my body dies, I'm okay with that, all right? Okay, so I wanna be sealed. I wanna be sealed. And that is my joy, that I, and I can drive through India. I can go to, I, I worked really hard to get into West Africa when the Ebola virus was going on, because I, I had, I've been, I knew I was supposed to go. And, um, I tried three routes. They would not let me in. Would not even let me get close to the border. My missionary calls me and says, "Steph, just get to the border. We'll get you across the border." And I'm like, "Okay." And I tried, I couldn't get a flight. But it's, it was okay, because it was the Lord's timing. So I traveled the world by myself into very crazy places. And it's okay, because I know that if I die, I'm the Lord's, I'm in the Lord's hands and it's gonna be good. If, if he keeps me here, well, glory to God too. I'd really rather go anytime. I've already told my friends, "Don't you dare call me back if I die. I don't wanna come back. I'm gonna be enjoying heaven, I wanna be there." All right, let's turn in our notes to, um, page twenty-three, number five. Do we have the chart real quick that we could look at? If you wanna look in your, in your, um, notebook at your chart, there's just something I wanna remind you about. Um, because when, tonight, we're gonna talk about the rapture. We're gonna define the rapture, what it is. And we're gonna talk about it, um, just from a biblical standpoint. Um, before I did this study, it was really cute. Russ Fraz was here that first night. And he comes out and he says, "Stephanie", he says, "You know, I never got to spend time and really study the Book of Revelation." He said, "I've studied, but I've only studied what other pastors have talked about and what I learned in seminary." He said, "I never got to study it out for myself." And can I say that that is true of most people? It takes, it's, it actually is a lifelong study. Look at me, I've got two pairs of glasses. I am blessed, I can have double vision tonight, twenty-twenty. But I, I, I thought it was so cute, because he was like, "You know, here I am. I, I, my whole life, I've never had the, the time to spend on the Book of Revelation." And can I say that studying out Revelation has been, for me, over the last twenty years, twenty-plus years, has been a, something that I have dove into with like both feet and my whole heart. And can I say that it's still, every time I go through it, I learn so much? And I, I just am shocked at how much of the Word of God it encompasses. It starts in Genesis and it doesn't end in Revelation. We have bookended books, but there's gonna be more. There's gonna be more. The millennial reign is gonna be something we just can't even imagine. So when we look at this chart, we're all looking from weak and broken places where, and none of us know everything. We look at what's coming in the future, like the prophets in the old, old time, before Jesus came. They looked and they saw this Jesus coming, this Messiah coming. But they were like, you know, "We see him like this, we see he's Emmanuel, we see who..." But when, you know, when he got there, only a few recognized him. Simeon and Anna in the tabernacle, they recognize, or the temple, they recognized him, right? They were like, "This is that Messiah, right here." And many, and John the Baptist, "Look who's coming. Prepare the way of the Lord, here he is, the Messiah." But we look at Revelation the same way. We look and we go, "Okay, this is what we know from the Word of God. We know it's gonna happen, but we still are looking through a glass darkly at it." One day, when we get there and when we see the, the Antichrist as, you know, revealed, we're gonna go, "That's what he looks like, because that's what the Word of God says he looks like." When we see the great falling away happen, we're gonna go, "That's the great falling away. I know what it is, because that's what the Word of God has described to me." When we see the seals being opened, we're gonna go, "Oh, that's it." Right? But right now, we look and we go, "Okay, this is what the Word says and I believe it. But I really can't tell you what it's gonna look like. My guess is as good as y'all's, right? I am, I know I can trust firmly in this Word. I know that when he says, "It'll be like the days of Noah", I can believe that. Now more than yesterday, now more than last year, now more than the last time I taught this. I remember thinking, "The last time I taught this, things can't get any worse. I can't hear more information that makes me sick to my stomach." And I have, in the last month. It's shocking. You go, "What? How can people be that depraved?", right? But it's happening. So, whether this happens at the first, right at the first of the seven, I'll get my little stick up here, my flag stick. I was gonna, I was trying to get a, a thing, a laser pointer, and I still don't have it yet. But I will get my act together one day before the class is over. If the, if the rapture happens here, it is, it is, um, then that means there are two events that are gonna happen. One at the first of the seven years, or, and that would be just the rapture, where we will meet him in the air. Now, we know the rapture is going to happen. What we don't know is the timing. And so what I'm presenting to you is both or all three timings. There's the pre-trib place is right here. The mid-trib is here, when the Antichrist is unveiled. Up here is your, your marker scriptures. These are your markers. When the Antichrist is unveiled, the man of sin demands to be worshiped and the abomination of, of desolation happens, that's when the first seal is open, broken open, right after that. The abomination of desolation, I think we're gonna talk a little bit about that tonight. But it's when the idol is set up in the temple and he is demanded to be worshiped as God. And the final, uh, point where the rapture may take place would be here, at the last, uh, line here. And this, we believe, is at the seventh trumpet. Regardless, we'll all be raptured here. If it's not here, and it's not here, it will be here. So we know that for sure. But at the last trumpet, "The dead in Christ shall rise", and we depend on that scripture, which is Revelation, uh, no, which First Corinthians, I'm sorry, First Corinthians fifteen fifty-two is that scripture that talks about at the last trumpet. And that's, uh, concerns Revelation eight and nine. And that's all on that little chart. So if you're going through, you can read through that chart. Now Sally and Tony believe that the rapture will be right here. I have no argument. I have no argument. If it's here, glory to Jesus, we're, we are happy about that. I grew up in a home that we believed this, okay? So that's, and remember, that's not the, the mission of this class, to say when Jesus is coming, right? We talked about this. It's to say who is coming, right? Okay, so, pre-trib, mid-trib. And this is, I don't, I don't really call this post-trib. I call it pre-wrath, because this is before the wrath of God is poured out. Okay? And we're gonna talk about that. We're gonna talk about the rapture tonight only because chronologically, this is where it is in the Book of Revelation, okay? And I hope that you, you, um, worked in your Bible this time. If some of you marked your Bibles up in a very creative way, I would love to see it. I do, I am gonna give to the best one. I'm gonna give you a choice of a journaling Bible. So come and see me afterwards and we'll, we'll talk about. Oh, two pairs of glasses. That can get so confusing, okay? Okay, all right. So let's start at page twenty-three, let's start at the top. "What is the rapture? What is Armageddon? And what is the second coming procession?" So, um, when you're pre-trib and mid-trib, believe that there are two events that are gonna happen. The first one is the rapture, the second one is the second coming procession, okay? And then if you are at the seventh trumpet, at the last trumpet shall sound, then you believe that it's all one event. Does that make sense to everybody? It's either one event or two, and I'm, I'm not dogmatic about it. I'm happy about either one, okay? Because it's, that doesn't matter. My opinion really doesn't matter, you know? God, God has his opinion and that's the only one that counts. Aren't you glad? Boy, he's had the best opinion all my life. He's had, he's, he's told me no several occasions and I'm so glad he said no. He was right. I was stupid. I was immature, I didn't know what I was talking about. He did. I'm so glad. And God knows every single detail about everything. He knows all the plan and I wanna trust his plan. And the more I read the Word of God, the more I'm gonna trust his plan. And I do a whole lot of more things like this. I put my hand out and I turn the other way and I say, "Jesus, I trust you. I am not gonna get run over by a car. I'm not gonna get run over in the middle of the stream. I trust you, Lord." And I keep my eyes on him. It's very much like walking on water with Peter. You stick your hand out and you say, "No" to the enemy and you just go, right? And I say that, because I woke up this morning with a dream where I was flying in a where I was flying in a vehicle. I was driving across this huge snow mountain. And I slammed on my brakes right at a sheer cliff that was all white snow, and it was snowing out of... With snow out of the air, it's like pure words from heaven. Slammed on my brakes. And I went, got out of my car, and I looked down. There was a sheer drop of, I don't know how many thousands of feet, but there were people down there working. And I got back in my car, and I remember thinking, "Boy, I'm sure glad I stopped." And got out of my car, and looked, and I... Whoa, you know, and I get back in my car, and I hit the accelerator, just like that. This was in my dream, it wasn't in reality. Hit the accelerator, and I flew, and I landed on a ledge. It was a great landing. I told my prayer team that today, and they were like, "Oh, that's how you roll, Steph. Let me see, you do that all the time?" And I'm like, "Good Lord. What is wrong with me?" But you know it's true, if you stop and think about things, you'll stop. I have no idea why I hit the accelerator, but I did. But I think it's a powerful dream. Because it was all white, it was good, pure words from heaven. Okay. What is the rapture? So the third chronological section, and there we are. We're right at that third spot. Does everybody know where I am, or do I need to show you? Got it? Okay, we're right before the first seal is broken. We're at the seventh trumpet. We're right here. Okay? In the chronology. Alright. So the third chronological section begins, and here's the seventh trumpet. What is the rapture? The rapture is the Latin word meaning caught up. The term rapture does not appear in Scripture. We will use the word, this word, to describe an event with Jesus that has never happened before. The last trumpet, or the seventh trumpet initiates the second coming procession, or rapture. Remember, we said it's either a one thing event or a two. The seven... Here's what Revelation 11 says. "The seventh angel sounded, and there were loud voices in heaven saying, 'The kingdoms of this world have become the kingdoms of our Lord and of His Christ, and He shall reign forever and ever.'" We read this last week all together. "And the twenty-four elders worshiped God, saying, 'We give you thanks, because you have taken your great power and reigned.' The nations were angry, your wrath has come, and the time of the dead, that they should be judged, is here. And that you should reward your servants, and should destroy those who destroy the earth.'" We talked about this last week. "Jesus has all the power now. At this point in time, we are gonna see Him take His power. And at this trumpet, He will exert His rule in a way that everybody in the world will see. Up to this point, Jesus has allowed the free will of man to run its course, with limitations and consequences. And Mike Bickle, who I study with all the time, said this is when he believes the rapture begins. But he also believes the second coming procession begins at this time. Paul prophesied that the rapture event would occur at the seventh trumpet. Behold..." And here's what it says in First Corinthians 15:50 to 52. "Behold, I tell you a mystery; we shall not all sleep, though we shall all be changed in a moment, in the twinkling of an eye, at the last trumpet. For the trumpet will sound, and the dead will be raised incorruptible, and we shall all be changed." And here's what Revelation 10 says. "In the days of the sounding of the seventh angel, when He, the angel, is about to sound, the mystery of God would be finished, as He declared to His prophets." There's no more trumpets in the book after this one. There's no more in Book of Revelation, that's it. Regardless of what timeframe you believe, the saints who are alive will be raptured by this point, for sure. This is definitely it. Alright? Could be pre, could be mid, but we know it's by this point, it's done. "For the Lord Himself will appear with the declaration of victory, the shout of an archangel, and the trumpet blast of God. He will descend from the heavenly realm and condemn those who are dead in Christ..." Excuse me. "Command those who are dead in Christ." He's not gonna condemn them, he's gonna command them, "who are dead in Christ, to rise first." These glasses are doing me no good. "Then, when we are alive, we'll join them, transported together in the clouds, to have an encounter with the Lord in the air, and we will be forever joined with the Lord." First Thessalonians 4:16. So I left in the Passion Translation notes. I put them in here because it's really powerful. He talks about how the Lord will continually and habitually descend from heaven. And as we talk about this, I want you to think about what Brian Simmons came up with when he was translating the Word. He said, "You know, it's like a continual shout, it's like a continual coming, and we will be rising with Him, to be with Him in the air." And so that's a powerful little three footnotes from the book. Go down to, it says, "Remember, these events are chronological. There are five chronological sections. They unfold in order, one after another. The second coming rapture event comes in three stages, and it's not a fast process." Jesus comes across the entire earth. In the sky, He comes across the land, and He reenters Jerusalem finally. Jesus will use the seven bowls of wrath to destroy the armies of the Antichrist and win the Armageddon campaign at the Battle of Jerusalem. There's a purpose behind this. He's not just coming back to take us away. He's... Wherever it is, wherever it is in this timeline, it's not just an escape mechanism for the believer. He has purpose, just like Jesus does. He has purpose in everything that He does. He has a plan, and it's brilliant, as you know. Okay. Jesus is coming back to earth to live permanently. Jesus said, "Behold, I'm coming quickly, and my reward is with Me, to give everyone according to His work. Surely, I am coming quickly." Jesus is coming back to earth to establish His kingdom. His coming is the ultimate event in prophecy, and we're looking forward to this. And it's referred to as our blessed hope. Here's what Matthew 25 says. "When the Son of Man shall come in His glory, and all the holy angels with Him, then He shall sit upon the throne of His glory, and before Him shall be gathered all nations. He shall separate them one from another, as a shepherd divides his sheep from the goats. And He shall set the sheep on His right hand, and the goats on the left. Then shall the king say unto him on his right hand, 'Come, ye blessed of the Father, from the foundation of the world.'" Jesus' coming is centered on a military conflict around the city of Jerusalem. He will come to win the Battle of Jerusalem, which ends the Armageddon campaign. I am gonna take a minute and just read this segment of Scripture in Isaiah 63, because it is powerful. And it's just four verses. It says, "Who is coming from the city of Bosra in Edom? He is dressed in garments of bright scarlet, robed in garment dyed bright red, marching like a champion in His great power and might. This is I. I am the one who announces righteousness. I am mighty and ready to save. Why are my robes so red, like those of treading grapes? I've been treading in the winepress alone. There was no one there from the nations to help me. I stomped on the nations in my anger, and trampled them down in my wrath. Their blood soaked my clothing and stained all my robes, for a day of vengeance was in my heart, and the time of my redeeming work had come.'" Is that for the believer? Who's he angry at? Who is God angry at? The evil who shake their fist at the Almighty God. It's not... I don't want you to think that it's just those who have veered away from the Lord a little bit, okay? It's not them. It's the ones that shake their fist against God. And you may be hearing about these people right now in our system, the things that are... Because of the corruption that is going on, the high level of corruption, you may be hearing some of these things. This is what the Lord is coming to destroy. He's not coming after you to destroy you. He has sealed you with His love, and He is gonna take care of you. Absolutely, every hair on your head is safe. But He is going to take care of the wicked. I'll tell you, if you're not stirred to wrath in your own heart over some of the wicked things that are going on in our society, are you stirred to wrath? I am. I'm like, "God, how much longer? I can't take this much longer." I work with children all the time. It makes me sick to my stomach to see what's going on. I'm very angry about it. But I have to be patient, because the One is coming soon. Our soon coming King. And He's gonna take that out, okay? Jesus comes to earth to defeat the Antichrist at Jerusalem, then to establish His throne there. Here's what Jeremiah says. "At that time," the millennial Jerusalem, "it will be called the throne of the Lord, and all the nations will be gathered to it in the name of the Lord." Jesus raptures the saints by the sound, at the sound of the last trumpet, or before. The rapture describes what happens to all the saints worldwide related to the last coming. As Jesus descends from heaven, He will catch up or rapture the saints to meet Jesus in the air, as they are instantly changed by receiving resurrected bodies. We shall see Jesus face to face as we're gathered to be with Him. Now, I want you to read, take time to read First Thessalonians, we don't have time. "But Jesus will rapture all the saints, and He will bring all of the saints with Him from heaven." And there's the scriptures right there. Jesus will come with all the angels. This is what the rapture's gonna look like. We think of the rapture as being like a second, right? Boom, we're all gone, everything's over. That's not what it says, it doesn't say that. And there's so many scriptures to go along with that these things are gonna be happening, but it's gonna be happening and happening and happening. It's not just gonna be a second. What will happen in a second is that we will be changed to be like Him in a moment, in a twinkling of an eye. But everything else is gonna take some time. Because, let's keep going in our Scripture. "Jesus will send out His angels with a specific role in gathering the saints to the sky from the ends of the earth, and in gathering unbelievers to remove them from the earth by killing them." He's gonna kill, He's gonna take care of those unbelievers, those wicked people who are shaking their fist at God, and who are destroying and persecuting the saints. The saints who are being persecuted right now. There was one day that's gonna happen, that Jesus is gonna come and take vengeance on them. "He will send His angels with the sound of a great trumpet. They will gather together His elect from the four winds, and from the end of heaven, one end of heaven to the other. When the trumpet sounds, we will all be changed." Why? Flesh and blood. Here's why we're gonna have a rapture. Flesh and blood cannot inherit the kingdom of God. Neither does corruption. "We shall not all sleep, but we shall all be changed in a moment, at the last trumpet, for the trumpet will sound, and the dead saints will be raised incorruptible, and we shall all be changed." So why is the rapture gonna happen? Because we'll be changed to be like Him, because we can't inherit the kingdom of God otherwise. If we've died, we're coming with Him, we'll be with Him. We will be with Him and establish His kingdom. But the reason the rapture is gonna take place is so that we'll be changed to be like Him. Is that so good? Is that terrifying? No! That's exciting! I think it's the most exciting thing that's ever gonna happen to any of us. And we're gonna meet everyone in the air, if we're still here. If we're still here, and if we are alive and remain, we meet them in the air. We're gonna be so overcome by this thing. I think we'll be shocked, really, we'll be in shock and awe. It will be fun, plus our bodies will be changed to be like Him. Now, I've gotta wrap this up in one minute. Now, Paul said, "In a moment, we will all be changed." Okay. Here's what the rapture is defined. "The glorified Jesus of Revelation will travel across the very dark sky with every angel following." That alone is gonna be shocking. "Every eye should have no trouble seeing Him. They will see Him clear enough to mourn," because that's what the Bible says. "Every eye will see Him, and they will mourn, because they will go, 'He is coming. There really is a judgment day.'" It will be shocking to many people who believe they will never be judged. There's many people who live above the law, who say, "I will never have to pay for this." Right? Many people. And they're making it laws so that they can live like that. "The angel will use his human name to announce Jesus' return, Yahshua." Jesus was human for 33 years on earth. He did not change His name or lose His humanity. He is the same when He left. You know, when we fear, when somebody leaves, we fear a lot of times, "Oh, my gosh, but when we see Him again, they'll change." But Jesus doesn't. He's the same yesterday, today, and forever. When we see Him in the skies, we're gonna go, "Whoa, I'm gonna be changed to be like Him in a moment." Quantifies how fast that redeemed individuals will be changed. Not how much time it takes for all the church to collectively see Him and be changed. We are all chan... When we are all changed, and that means all across the entire planet, every eye will see Him. We will all be changed, then the rapture will be complete. But that's gonna take some time, alright? I mean, let's just use logic on this. It's not... The whole thing's not gonna happen in a moment, but our changing to be like Him will be rapid. We won't even, I don't even know if we'll know, right? How incredible it is. Until after it happens, we'll be like, "Whoa, this is awesome." Alright, and then next week, we're gonna start there. What will we look like after the rapture, okay? That's gonna be really exciting. Alright, so Father, right now, we just thank You. We just give You glory and praise and honor.